Please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we beseech your divine guidance in this meeting. Keep us ever mindful of our obligation. Grant us, dear Lord, wisdom, tolerance, and courage that we may well serve our county and fulfill our trust. Amen.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of September 12th.
Second.
Discussion? Roll.
Hambley.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Sweattick.
Yes. Okay, this morning, oh, first of all, do we have any public comment regarding any pending resolution? No. Okay. We have a commendation to present this morning. Jim Coolis, President of the Local Chapter, I believe, is here, and Ed Zachary, and I see someone else. But I'm sure Ed will introduce them. But I'm going to read this commendation first. Honoring Medina County, Chapter Number 385 of the Vietnam Veterans of America on their 35th anniversary. It has come to the attention of the Board of County, Medina County Commissioners, that the Vietnam's Veterans of America, Chapter Number 385, is celebrating 35 years of continuing dedication to Vietnam veterans and their families of Medina County. The Vietnam Veterans of America, Chapter Number 385, was founded on July 23rd, 1988, in order to give Vietnam veterans of Medina County a place to meet and share their concerns that specifically affected Vietnam veterans and their loved ones. The Vietnam Veterans of America, Chapter Number 385, quickly recognized that the Vietnam veterans had different needs and concerns from their counterparts in previous wars. Exposure to dioxins and illnesses that plagued Vietnam veterans has been a mission of the Vietnam Veterans of America since their inception. The Vietnam Veterans of America, Chapter 385, made it their mission to remember the 33 men who paid the ultimate sacrifice for Medina County by erecting the Medina County Veteran, Vietnam Veterans Memorial on Northland Drive in their remembrance, so that we can never forget the price of freedom. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Medina County Commissioners wishes to recognize and honor Vietnam Veterans of America, Chapter Number 385, of Medina County on their 35th anniversary.
So I have Mr. Jim Coolis, President of our board, Mr. Jack Forrester, and Mr. Jim Coolis, the President of 385. I'm sorry, Jim Hoesley is President of my board. So, you're all Vietnam vets, we're going to get a picture with you guys up there.
All right, come on up.
Where do you want this up here?
Come on up, you guys are the stars of the show here.
All right. There, Jim, get in the middle.
Jim, get in the middle, there you go. Ed, you want to come up?
No, I was 12 when Vietnam ended, so.
Here, this is your commendation.
Here me in.
There you go. You can hold it while he takes the picture. Okay.
All right, go on with the editor.
Good.
Okay, my turn. Perfect, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Does anybody want to, do you want to, did I just say something? Anybody would like to say something?
Oh, come on, you always want to say something. Get your chance.
Okay, I want to thank yous all. The forming of this chapter produced a very colorful and exciting 35 years. Our original starting was in 86. I joined in 88, and I have never missed a meeting. The obstacles thrown at us at that time are what yous read about today. We could not find a meeting place. We met in garages and in barns until 87, 88, when we were offered a chance to move into the Veterans Memorial Hall, and we found a home and we ain't moving. So I want to thank yous all very much. This is really nice to have, thank you again.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Okay, next up we have our resolutions, and first up we have Andy Conrad, our County Engineer.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I have three resolutions for your consideration this morning. The first is approving the final plat for the Symphony Way Extension subdivision in Sharon. The second would be the approval of the annual assessment in the same subdivision. And the third would be approving the final change order for our paint striping contract.
Move to approve the three resolutions, second.
Discussion? Roll.
Hambley.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Sweattick.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up we have Jeremy Cinco, our Sanitary Engineer.
Morning, everyone. One resolution for your consideration today, and that's authorizing the Sanitary Engineer to enter into an agreement with GPD Group for Professional Design Services for the Bacthull and Branch Road Water Main Extension Project.
Move to approve, second.
Discussion? Roll.
Hambley.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Sweattick.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeremy. Next up we have Holly Murin, our Human Resources Director.
Good morning.
Good morning.
On our personal changes resolution today, we have three new hires, one in maintenance, two at Job and Family Services, five rate increases, one at Sanitary, one at Job and Family Services, one at Transit, and two at County Home. We have two leave of absence at Job and Family Services, one resignation at Solid Waste District, and one retirement and rehirement at the dog shelter.
Move to approve, second.
Discussion?
I just, I wanted to note, we do have Dell Sapples rehiring on the agenda for this week.
And we had a public meeting on it, yes.
And we had the public hearing, there've been some other things that have come out after that, including most recently some sort of a social media petition, which is not typically how we do things, I know I'm new, but not typically how we do things from an HR standpoint. But I think Dell's had a long career here of service, I think he's done good work. I think he's specifically open to making some of the improvements that we all want to see at the dog shelter. And I'm happy to vote to allow him to continue doing that.
I'd also like to say I think Dell is the definition of a true public servant. So I think the county is very lucky to have him.
I just think that some of the social media coverage, like often we hear, is very unfortunate. A lot of it untrue, a lot of things exaggerated. I think I mischaracterize the operations of our dog shelter. We have a very high adoption rate, not a low adoption rate. In fact, I'd take that and challenge anybody else to find one higher that's within the public sector, for 99%, I believe, thereabouts. And that's something we've had longstanding. The Commissioners worked many, many years with the dog warden, but also with the various groups to get that adoption rate over the years. And Dell was all part of that. And certainly, I think, his retirement and rehire is appropriate, and I fully support that.
We are united in our support of him. Roll.
Hambley.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Sweattick.
Yes, thank you, Holly.
Thank you.
Okay, next up we have Brett Thomas, our Finance Director.
Howdy, Commissioners.
Morning.
I have 11 resolutions for you guys today, but they're all pretty quick ones. First one is increases to appropriations. Our second resolution today is transfer of appropriations between funds. Our third resolution today is moving cash for the print shop for the different departments. Our fourth resolution is similar, only we're moving money for the gasoline fund. Our fifth resolution is a creation of the Probate and Juvenile Case Management Fund. For ARPA money, we approved that last week, and now this week we're starting on the paperwork for it. Our sixth resolution is an amended agreement for the onset team for the sheriff. They have reduced the amount by probably a smaller margin than the paperwork cost to run all of this, but tis the way it works. Our seventh resolution is purchase of 6,800 gallons of gasoline for the Engineering Center. For once, Port's Petroleum was not our low bid. We had Centerra from Ashland this week, so we have that on the menu. Our eighth resolution is expenses for the Adult Probation Department. This is a three-day conference that they are going to in Columbus. Our ninth resolution is a convention for the County Engineer. Tenth resolution is other county officials, nothing that's really out of state. And finally, our 11th resolution is our weekly bills, in the amount of $2,504,264.47. And as always, copies of all of the bills are available in the Auditor's Office for your perusal.
Move to approve the 11 resolutions, second.
Discussion? Roll.
Hambley.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Sweattick.
Yes. Thank you, Brett. Next up we have our County Administrator, Chris Jacob.
Good morning.
Good morning.
First resolution this morning approves an agreement with Leadership Medina County for a customized leadership training development program. We've had discussions over the last month or so about this program. This would be the second year for our sponsorship of the program. This would benefit 10 current staff members at a per individual cost of $2,750. This program has been modified slightly in terms of scope, in terms of time commitment and length of program. But I think that those 10 individuals will greatly benefit from this program. And the second and final resolution this morning approves a sub grant to Medina County, or the Medina Metropolitan Housing Authority, to support the public health response to COVID-19 with funding for an emergency housing assistance program through use of ARPA dollars. This is a follow-up resolution to Mr. Cypos's presentation last week. This would provide $40,000 for the remainder of this year. Would supplement the previous allocation that had been made by the Board of County Commissioners, and is in combination with other funding sources to allow for that housing, emergency housing assistance program to continue.
I am willing to, oh, I'd like, with the Chairman's permission, like to be able to separate these two separate resolutions.
Sure.
I'll have to abstain on the Leadership Medina County, as I'm on the Board of Directors and the fiduciary responsibility there. But I'll make the motion to approve the resolution regarding the sub grant to Medina Metropolitan Housing Authority.
I second that.
Discussion? Roll.
Hambley.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Sweattick.
Yes, and I will make the motion regarding the Leadership Academy for our, please.
I'll second that.
Discussion? Roll.
Hambley.
Abstain.
Harrison.
Yes.
Sweattick.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next up we have our department update, and the only department update we have today is Richard. You're the star of the show.
No pressure.
Well, thank you, and good morning.
Good morning.
So, we have our new report, reporting method here now before you. Looks pretty similar, or at least we tried to keep it pretty similar as far as, as far as the contents and the layout. We're still tweaking it in minor fashions, but generally it's much easier to generate this report now. We can, now we can redo this report in half an hour, as opposed to a six or seven hour task, so, yeah, that's much better. So, value of construction, of course, continues to be less than last year, than our banner year we had last year. Year-to-date, down about 30%. Cost of new homes, $396,000 for August, which is just a little over the $389,000 year-to-date average cost of the new homes for the year. The new dwellings, month of August, is a little down from average at 33. And year-to-date, new dwellings is also down a little bit less than the average at 253 home starts so far this year. That's page one, page two. I just noticed this morning, even the heading on this page is kind of not really, not done right. It says, it says monthly report, when it should say monthly receipts for August, so we need to change that. But, yeah, so it's like page two's monthly receipts. Overall, you know, down 28% compared to last year. Page three is year-to-date receipts, also down 21%, 22% almost. So you can see it reads essentially the same, but looks a little different. Page four has the breakdown for residential permits by townships and villages. And page five is commercial permits issued in August by townships and villages. And then page six, commercial permits issued with some little more detail, the estimated value, and the use group identification for the projects.
I like the detail in the commercial.
I, it's, I think it's easier to read. Of course, bigger fonts always easier for me, but it's less cluttered. So, yeah, so, in regards to this monthly report, we often get requests for past reports, past months. And right now, we currently just put the current monthly report on the website. I think it would be smart or wise to at least have the current report plus the previous two months out there, so people can get to them. And I, but I need to ask IT to make that workable, because right now we can't do that. But it seems easy enough, no reason not to. And then on the other, and the other thing is, the planning departments often ask for these reports before I come and present to you. And so I'll continue to decline that request unless you say otherwise.
Planning need it for their meeting and maybe not coincide with our meeting? Because I have no problem with planning getting it before we get it.
Oh, yeah, no problem.
Yeah, if they, if they need it for one of their monthly meetings, I have no problem with them getting it first.
Okay. Okay. All right, that makes it a little easier, I'll share that, share that with them. And then, of course, you know, a lot of the same stuff can be generated on our website, you know, if they take the time to, to search it out and do that. Some, a lot of this, a lot of this, of these statistics is available on our, or reporting right on our website. So that's a good thing. Our review times remain good. We remain thrilled with our new clerk, and of course, we're, you know, very happy to have Keith around to make our stuff easier, and we're good, so. We're doing good, and I think our future looks bright.
Thank you so much.
Excellent, very good.
Thank you.
Okay, we do have a Commissioner Resolution. We have a resolution approving the appointment of a member to the Local Emergency Planning Committee for Medina County, and we are recommending Shandra DeVoe.
Move to approve, oh, sorry.
I just wanted to add that she's the industry representative.
Okay.
Second.
Discussion? Roll.
Hambley.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Sweattick.
Yes. Okay, we also have a notice of a liquor permit filing. The Commissioners received notice of a liquor permit transfer, transfer for True North Energy LLC, DBA True North, Number 381, 92040 Norwalk Road, Litchfield, Ohio. This is for C1, C2 in D6 permit classes. Again, this is just notification of that, we do not have to do a resolution, but we do have a second one. We also received notice, oh, is this the same one? No, it's different.
Different one.
Okay, True North Energy LLC, DBA True North, Number 393, 5329 Center Road, Brunswick Hills Township. This is for a C1 and C2 permit class. Okay, that's all we got for Commissioners, and then now we have, any public comment? All right, we will move into discussion session. Aaron, would you like to go first?
Sure. So, this was, this was covered fairly well locally, but last week, Senator Roman Chuck, Representative Melanie Miller, and Representative Sharon Ray hosted a joint press conference related to their actions to try and repeal the bill related to the Boston Road Interchange. I was able to go down and join the, represented, the members of the legislature, along with members of Brunswick City Council, and for people didn't see the picture, many citizens of Brunswick, and also Strongsville and others affected by that plan for the press conference. The press conference was kind of the first step in, I think, a long process of getting some resolution up there. There are many other things that, you know, there were meetings with ODOT that the city had, and it sounds like those, those conversations are ongoing. Nothing, obviously, definitive has happened or will happen in the near future. But in connection with kind of offering our support to the efforts of the city to oppose that, I wanted to propose that we take some action with, in the form of a resolution, perhaps at our next meeting, to formally oppose the development of that interchange on the basis that it's, well, there's several, several bases. One, that it is in violation of the NOAC interchange policy. The process didn't comply with the track process that's required for, you know, to kind of avoid the state legislature inserting itself into interchange decisions. And then also the impact that it has on the homeowners that are there. I mean, it's just a huge negative impact to them and the uncertainty it creates. And even, you know, some of the people who are down there were telling me about the impact it's already had on their property values, even though there's some reasonable degree of confidence that it's not going to happen without Brunswick's involvement and consent to it. It's already affecting property values, so if people wanted to, to move as a result of it, not that anybody does, but their hands are tied in that regard. They're just kind of along for the ride here. So, a large basis and volume of, I think, reasons why we would take action to express that opposition. The only other thing, I guess, I'd like to just clarify is, this is an opposition in general to additional interchanges on I-71. I think within Medina County, there are other places that would warrant such action. Specifically, we've got Jeff Brandon here from Montville Township. There's one that's been discussed down there for 20 years or so. Yeah, I should say.
Closer to 40.
20 years that I've been here, it's been discussed, yeah, it's been discussed for much longer than that. And, and this issue on Boston Road is a, is a product of, maybe 40 years ago, that, that could have worked, you wouldn't have had the population you have there, we still have the opportunity.
Actually, the study by NOWAC a several years ago showed there's more justification for it down there.
Exactly, right.
Than Boston Road.
Yep, yeah, and it, and it would, and it wouldn't be as disruptive to put one in, it wouldn't be as costly to put one in, you wouldn't have the, the pipeline issues. So, just, I, I don't think we need to be too carefully worded on the opposition. I just want to make it clear that the opposition is specific to the Boston Road Interchange and the methodology of getting it put on the list.
And we're, we would also list our support for the bill that calls for the retraction of that section, the repeal.
Yes.
So we would reference those two bills, the Senate bill as well as the House bill.
Yep.
Okay, all right.
So I will work on that, but I, I know we're all fairly on the same page, but.
Thank you for going to Columbus, I appreciate it.
Oh, yeah, and as much as Medina County has been a victim of the NOWAC interchange policy, the changing rules over the last several decades, history has shown that they're interested in interchanges outside Cuyahoga County. If you pay them and share taxes, that's what the Avon interchange resulted in a number of years ago. There's a tax-based sharing that was forced by the then Board of County Commissioners for Cuyahoga County, which was, of course, renowned for their honesty, as well as transparency. And where they forced that, that kind of deal, we've been victims of that, unfortunately. And so it pains me a little bit to support the current interchange file, it's convenient to support it, in as much as it, as it does need significant reform and review. And I think constant pressure to remind them that there are other counties than Cuyahoga County that ought to be, have a say.
Certainly.
Where interchanges are at. And so I think, but I agree, obviously, with Senator Roman Chuck when he made the statement, and I think appropriately focused on the state process and the state law. The state process has been, since George Voinovich and that, and when Bill Basholder was down there, and Grace Drake, that track process. That has been the planning for interchanges, that's the way it should, and the improvements in the highway system, and the major highway infrastructure improvements, and that's the process that they've bypassed with that, with that change in law. And I think that's what the advocacy ought to be pointing to, as well as, I think, the woefully misguided attempt to put an interchange at Boston.
Well, and that's, I, we may have talked about it when this first came up, but I suspect that some, if not all, of the momentum to have it happen in Columbus is a product of the Strongsville folks looking and saying, well, NOWAC is not going to be a lot of help of making this priority, because they have studied it, and studied it, and studied it, much like they've studied the southern option, and have, to your point, identified the southern option as a more viable and productive option, both in terms of alleviating traffic congestion, improving air quality, and just the net cost of, of developing it, is, it's, it's better on all of those fronts. But that, that one hasn't made even the long-term plan, and the Strongsville one has been, you know, less inclined to make the long-term plan, and that's where some of these end runs come, is, as a result of that. So, I do think, looking at the policy at the NOWAC level, makes sense, I totally support that. I also think, while that is the policy, and it continues, and NOWAC has expressed an indication that it will be on the December agenda to take action, to identify that this process at the state level did not comply with the interchange policy. So I'll be very disappointed if NOWAC doesn't, let's say, to whatever extent they can, enforce that policy that's on the books related to these interchanges, when there's one in front of them that's clearly in violation of that policy.
So, in the past, the county, given there's township land within proximity of this, this area, I think along Carpenter Road there, that would be impacted. At some point in time, the county has been involved in discussions, other than, you know, the NOWAC, when they had their community meetings. At this point, I know that the ODOT, or the Governor's Office supposedly, has been encouraging the two communities to get together. Has the county been, has the County Engineer been invited? Not asking that you go ahead and volunteer to show up at those, but, okay, all right, just curious. That's more of a, yeah.
I, so I did, actually, to that point, I had a conversation with some representatives of Brunswick City after they met with ODOT last week.
Yeah.
And I said, to the extent there is a follow-up meeting that includes Brunswick and Strongsville, I thought it would be appropriate. I volunteered to sit in, I also, I volunteered Andy to sit in.
There is a county interest there. It's a county, County Road.
And Brunswick, Brunswick agreed that that, that would make sense, that, you know, in as much as the County Road, we should be part of that conversation as well.
Yeah, I completely understand Brunswick's concern, it would be detrimental to so many properties and so many residents that live there.
I just can't imagine relocation of that pipeline, right?
Yeah.
I'd imagine, seeing what they're going through on Western 130th, actually. Reminds me of even far worse.
Anything else?
That was it, other than we'll, I will continue working on a resolution that hopefully will be, will have on the agenda for next week, if that's okay with both of you.
Sure. Good, good.
Steve, do you have anything?
Yeah, actually, I'd shared with many of you a letter regarding the NOWAC Climate Action Plan and the various meetings, and I'll, if you, if you wouldn't mind, just a minute to kind of do a preface to that, to that. I did attend the, the meeting in Wadsworth. Obviously, we've talked with a number of members, I know Bethany, Bethany had been in attendance, actually, of all three of the community meetings. Likewise, at the Economic Development Corporation Board of Directors meeting last week, we discussed it, the issues surrounding that, and the observations regarding those meetings. Looking at the, and I think I also shared with you their, if you were their discussion guide, as well as how they're approached and what their, their questions, which I think were a rather slanted way to do it. But, but the facilitator did the best, I guess, he could to deal with a subject that has, it became a lightning rod for polar opposites when it comes to this issue. And it caused me then to take a look and say, what was, look, what was driving it? None of their presentations talked about, other than saying this plan is being completed basically back in the offices. As I understood, no committee members of NOWAC are actually being involved in the writing of this. It is primarily a staff function, and does not involve any of the Board or committees to draft this, which I think is kind of, probably lacks a good process. If you're talking about all the elected officials that have to adopt this, and it sounds like it's on a, it's almost on a train, I'll say it's like a train schedule. We're leaving in October, we're voting in December, and we have to submit for a grant in whatever it is, February or March. I understood from Grace Galucci's public comments that there is a deadline with EPA, and it was unclear to me whether this deadline and it was unclear to me whether this deadline is driven by a grant that NOAAAC already received or a grant that NOAAAC is pursuing. And given I couldn't find any information, and I think I clearly stated in the letter that there is no mandate for a regional climate action plan, there's no financial disincentive for not adopting a regional climate action plan. Caused me to look at and say, okay, what are the action plans, climate action plans other regions are adopting, other regional governments within Ohio, and also what other climate action plans have been adopted by the various governments. I couldn't find any in Ohio that have adopted one. I know OKI, which is Ohio, Kentucky, Indiana, which is multi-state, they're only in the process of hiring consultants for greenhouse gas inventory. So we're kind of way ahead of the schedule as a region. But there are a lot of other sub-governments, local governments, municipalities, counties that have adopted it and looked at what's been referenced in NOAAAC's, the climate action plans. There are Lakewood, Cuyahoga County, City of Cleveland, City of Oberlin have all adopted climate action plans. So I reviewed those. And indeed, I've looked at those. And in the letter, I kind of approached that we don't have consensus in Medina County. I think that was clear from the meetings. Likewise, I kind of questioned the process, but that's okay. I know that the consultant's going to have a difficult time trying to accurately reflect the full and diverse range of public opinions expressed or even kind, identify where there's consensus. And so when look at the current, at the climate action plans that have already been adopted by these various local governments, there's a lot of things in there that actually we already doing. Our businesses are already doing, our local governments are already doing, and our residents are already doing. LED lighting, okay. Who hasn't adopted LED lighting, all that, right? Tree planting programs, we've got tree planting programs. Electric vehicle charging stations, we're trying to build them. Bike lanes. We're doing everything we can for bike, in other words, when we talk about multipurpose trails and so forth and walking, we are doing that. Solar arrays at various locations. We have in today's report, we have solar panels being installed by Mission Electric over there in Hinckley. That's not the only place. Solar panels are being, businesses are doing what they can responsibly. That seemed to be in Economic Development Corporation, the message from the business people, we're already doing these things. We are already trying to improve air quality. We're already trying to reduce our costs. We are trying to be more efficient. And so what's the reason for government to kind of step in and say, you have to do it, or to take credit for what already residents and businesses and local governments already are doing? It makes no sense for regional government to do that. Cuyahoga County is talking about building an interconnected system of greenways. Our park district is already starting to do this and expanding the parkland where it's available in Cuyahoga County. City of Cleveland's landlocked pretty much in Lakewood and some of those areas, yeah. But in Medina County, our park district has just submitted for a $3.4 million project for about two, over 200 acres, Bella Woods over in Liverpool Township, that will be going to a vote and rack here in about two weeks. Ranking, I think it's ranked very good, but it's another 220-plus acres. They've been very successful at expanding parkland. We don't need NOAAAC, the regional government, to tell us that we need to do that. We're doing the right thing. In our county, we're already pursuing this. Our businesses are already doing the right thing. We don't need a regional government to take credit for what we're doing, nor direct us or claim that this is because of their plan that we're doing the right thing. So I, improving stormwater and drainage structures. My God, we're already doing that. Every community I know is absolutely doing that. Increase our local food production. Anybody been to our Main Street Medina or basically our farmer's markets that are going on all over the place? We're already doing that. We have been doing that. So for NOAAAC to come in, a regional government, and say, hey, we'll include this in the plan, and aren't we great? You're not doing it. Local people are doing it. Our businesses are doing it. The local governments are doing it. Our nonprofit organizations are already doing this. So in my mind, I think that the regional government ought to stay out of this. If the county governments want to do this, Cuyahoga County has a plan already established, good for them. Lake County wants to do it, good for them. Cuyahoga, Medina County, we have a planning commission. If our planning commission, and Jeff Brandon is here, who's chairman of the planning commission, if you all want to start looking at a climate action plan and what more could be done, okay, fine, go at it. But I don't think we really spend one more dime on advancing this regional climate action plan. Their job is to monitor air quality. We have, we have programs already in place. We have, we already do the monitoring, we do the education, we already promote increasing transportation choice. We already do it with our bus system, we're promoting it. They can do that, talk about encouraging transit. So those programs are already ongoing, they can continue that. But we don't need another program or a government document from a regional government saying, hey, good job, this is what the future is. We're, we are taking responsibility for air quality as well as everything else that's going on, our quality of life. And I think we're doing it our way. Our residents are doing a good job. Our businesses are doing a good job. Our businesses, our local governments and county government, we're doing a good job in all these categories. And to add one more layer of a report that says, that claims that they're, that they're actually leading, leading the way regionally or nationally when it comes to climate action plan, I think is just disingenuous and ends up becoming more of a political statement than actually a practical document that would encourage us to continue the path that we're already on. So with that, I wanted, I have the letter that I think is to capture some of that. That was, led me to, like I said, observe this, and the number of businesses say, we're already doing this, we're already engaged. And their whole approach here is pitting, pitting one sector versus another, one population versus another, when we don't need to. We already are doing these things to improve air quality and as well as increase the efficiency of our, of our systems, our power systems, conversion to electric. We are doing solar projects all over the place. As you know, we're, we're taking it OSU extension. There's some other projects that we're looking. Local governments are doing it already. NOAAAC, we don't need, we don't need NOAAAC to help us identify it.
I think that, I appreciate that. I read through your letter and I support the outline there. And I think it's a matter of autonomy. You know, we're not going to infringe on Cuyahoga County's autonomy or Lakewood's autonomy to implement the plan they think is best for their citizens, nor do we want them to infringe on our autonomy to, to provide other incentives that maybe aren't in a, you know, an all-encompassing climate action document that applies to the entire region. And, you know, with, you mentioned transit. The profile of, we all have, we have transit policies at the regional level and a philosophy and think, but, but RTA and Medina County Transit and Lake Tran, they all have a different way of going about it to serve their very different communities. And, you know, we all retain that autonomy to operate in the way that's appropriate for our communities, and I don't see why this would be any different.
You know, the flex, Medina County flex that we did in Wadsworth, now we're expanding it within the next week in Medina. We're doing it. We're expanding. We're actually, when you look at the ridership that's growing, so NOAAAC is going to take credit for all the work we did. We didn't need them to do this. We actually were able to do it ourselves.
Well, and I, just to echo a concern, I know Andy Conrad is a member of the board as well, and he's had this on his radar from the beginning. When, when these new policies get implemented, too often they become a roadmap for funding. And so they say, well, this is, you know, this is the philosophy we're going to operate under to create this policy because it's more aspirational. But then, you know, it doesn't take very long until your funding is pulled back because you're not in compliance with it.
So I guess the question is, is their intent is to take the transportation funding that we need in Medina County and use it for their planning of their road, or we'll just say for their bike trails and their climate action plan elements?
Well, they haven't come out and said that.
Are there parks more important than our highways?
I know you've had that conversation.
Part of the issue I have with it is, and Aaron touched on this, is the five counties are so diverse.
Right.
And to have one climate action plan, one size fits all, doesn't really work. Because the needs and the capabilities of Medina County are significantly different than the more urban areas within NOAAAC. But, but my fear is that we've seen this in the past, is that it's a policy that gets put in place, and then along comes later is that the funding for projects within Medina County are tied to this plan and policy that may or may not even, as you said, aspirational, they may not even be obtainable.
Yeah.
And then our funding, we get a reduced amount of funding that is probably, you know, earmarked for Medina County because we're not complying with somebody else's idea of what we should be doing here in Medina County. And that's my fear, is that I see that coming, is that it gets put in as something that is discretionary and then becomes more of a policy that you have to execute. Whereas I, I don't, it, there's, like Steve said, there's no mandate from the state or federal level that we have this. But I think it's, they're looking to self-police us in that regard, is that you shall have it to get your funding.
First and foremost, NOAAAC is a transportation planning agency. That's where the funding's coming from.
I concur.
And so this is, is it largely try to redirect that to non-transportation investments?
I see, if you look at project fund, projects that are getting funded, there are significant dollars that I would say are outside of straight transportation projects.
So in effect, with this, what you're saying is we end up with this likely would be to divert more of that money, and we still have unmet transportation needs and infrastructures.
Yes. If you look at the long-range plan, you can see there, there's tens of millions of dollars worth of projects that are unfunded because there's just not enough money for all the projects. Why would we want to siphon more money off that to build more trails or to promote brownfield redevelopment? Not saying brownfield redevelopment's a bad thing, but maybe we shouldn't be using transportation dollars to do that.
Can I add?
Yeah, sure.
So I agree with everything that's been said. And my takeaway from it is that.
We need you up over there.
Up to the mic.
Yeah, Miles was giving us a signal.
But, I mean, so my understanding about this climate action plan is, you know, there's unprecedented funds coming down the pipeline for our communities through that IIJA, right? So if we, if we don't go along with this, I think that, in my fear, and I think Andy just said this, we could be missing out on some future funding opportunities for Medina Certainly involving, you know, air quality, water quality, maybe, you know, brownfield cleanup, pollution mitigation in general. So, you know, it's, it's difficult because, you know, the five counties are so, so different. Maybe one size, one program just doesn't fit all. But if, if we don't go along with a climate action plan, I think, you know, along with the group, I just think that we're going to miss out on future funding and grant opportunities for the county. And we don't even know what those are right now. And I don't think Grace knows either.
Well, what I'm looking at, as I said, when I started looking at all the other metropolitan planning organizations of Ohio, MORPC, do you think MORPC is walking away from some dollars? I mean, they've got some huge needs with New Albany and all everything that's going on with Intel. They're direct, state's directing so much money to them to solve their transportation problem. OKI, TMACOG, none of those are advancing, as I could tell based on what I could see on their websites, this, this idea that everybody has one regional plan. And so that's why, it caused me to question like, so why are we doing this, rather than the constituent counties that have that and could then have access to those dollars? As I understand, what I've been reading, is the, yes, those dollars are coming down, but that would be for any jurisdiction that has those plans in place.
Right.
So Medina County, at this point, we would say, let's, whoa, let's wait and see what the rules are. Certainly, we could adopt such a plan if we have a desire to access those dollars. But in the meantime, Cuyahoga County, you want to be the first in the region to get the dollars, good for you. I don't know what the cost, as we know, any dollars that come from the feds, there's always strings, always requirements that come along with it, either intentionally or unintentionally. And in which case, like, let's hold off, not rush to be, rush to judgment, be the first in.
And I think that, that is a question I haven't heard a clear answer on. I think there's been a lot of allusions to this funding reservoir that's there conditioned upon the adoption of a climate action plan. But in any effort to get some more clarity on what that is, what it looks like, how a regional plan, rather than more localized plan unlocks it, I've not heard any specifics on that. And that, that's another concern that I have, because you're right, we're the first ones in. There hasn't been a compelling benefit that I've seen to being the first ones to do a truly regional plan. And then even if we, even if we were to, they were to answer that question satisfactorily and say, no, here are the funding, you know, keys that we get, that we don't have in the absence of a regional plan. It's, it's really, to me, more about the underlying data, because certain of the goals, the goal that keeps getting cited is, you know, net zero by 2050. And net of what, when we don't have good data on the front end, which we've talked about in the past here, in terms of their greenhouse gas inventory having some, you know, lack of, some transparency issues, and then just some, I think, fairly objective data integrity issues. So I don't want to start with a, with fuzzy math and then say it's going to be net zero. And I think, I think Steve's made a great point in summarizing his letter. Many of the, much of the progress maybe has already been made. Before, before we put pen to paper on a climate action plan, we've made a lot of progress in terms of changed behaviors, both as a result of COVID and otherwise, less, less miles traveled, more electric vehicle adoption from their baseline data, which is already five years old and will be six years old when we, when we adopt.
Even I looked at the elements, I mean, like City of Cleveland, promote home weatherization, we've been doing that. Public utilities expand the use of smart grid technologies. Guess what, LMRE, well, the reason they're doing, we're doing expansion over there is for their smart technology, including smart meters. We promote energy efficiency and weatherization. We've got a number of programs we've been promoting and continue to. So in my, in my mind, it's like, we're already doing this.
Yeah.
We are.
Under a different name.
Yeah, under a different, different program, because that's what businesses do. This is what local governments do. This is what people do. And we don't need a regional government to tell us that's a good thing because we're already doing it.
Yeah, I, you know, Medina County is doing some wonderful things already that maybe some of these other counties are not, are not doing. Yeah, I think it's just, it's just that funding that's coming down the pipeline, they want to have a plan in place, you know, for the five counties. You know, another example is the SEDS plan, money coming down the pipeline for economic development. We don't even know what that's going to look like right now, but it's coming. So they better have a plan in place to get the funding later. And I think that's what this is all about. You know, put together the climate action plan, you know, do the best we can, you know, and, and we'll see what comes down the pipeline. But I, if we don't participate, I think we're, we're going to lose out on some funding for the county. And what that's going to look like, I, I don't know. And I don't, I don't think there's anybody at NOAAAC could even tell you exactly what's coming down the pipeline, because I don't think they know either.
So you're talking about, when you talk about this, the Strategic Economic Development Plan, correct?
Right.
Not the, not our special energy districts?
No, just the economic development plan.
Because we do have, actually, that's one of the things we have in our county that some counties don't. We have said, so we've been promoting them, that actually had to do with energy improvement and businesses actually then taxing themselves, putting on their property tax bill to help finance that. So we're doing some of the things, like I said, already that we ought to be taking and proudly saying, yeah, we've been doing it. But generally, the people that were in attendance, many of the residents were on polar opposites, are totally unaware that we're actually already doing many of these things.
Sure. Oh, sure.
And unfortunately, I think the facilitator could have been much more knowledgeable about that, rather than coming in in general saying, hey, we're going to do this. It's like, we already are doing this. And that's what some of the businesses communicated to me and to Economic Development, we're already doing this. We don't need NOAAAC to tell us that we ought to be, because they're going to follow what makes financial and responsible sense for their business operation as well as the community that they do business in.
Yeah. And I think we're all on the same page.
Right.
Here, you know, I, I agree with everything that's been said. I think we're all on the same page. I just, you know, if the other four counties go along with this and we don't, I, I just don't want to, you know.
Well, likely, if, if there's not a majority vote to stop what they're doing, they'll create a plan that we literally quote, be forced, coerced into being named participant in.
Yeah. Yeah, there's definitely some opposition to this, absolutely. And I don't know, you know, what Lorraine and Lake and Geoga, you know, maybe we're ahead of the, maybe we're a little ahead of this right now, you know, as far as putting together a letter, because I haven't seen another letter from another county.
No, no, I don't.
But if we, if we draft one, maybe they'll do the same thing. I, I don't know. But I hate to see. But I hate to see Cuyahoga County get all the, you know, the, you know, the funding opportunities.
Well, there's a good chance that was going to happen anyway.
There is always that chance.
All right. So, I'll continue working on the draft of the letter for us to consider within the next week to send to the other commissioners.
Andy wanted to say something else on this topic.
Yeah. I'm sorry.
Just speak to one thing Jeff brought up is, when it was first introduced at the board level, the, the premise was that the climate action plan was to unlock additional funding that we don't currently have access to at the federal level. I had a very specific question whether that if we pass a regional climate action plan, whether it would impact the current funding. And the, the answer was, that would have to be worked out at the policy level, which tells me that it, they, they may tie our current funding to the climate action plan, because they were not willing to add that when we first voted on it, that this was only for additional federal funding. It was not for that. They would not put that in the, they said that would have to be worked at the policy level at a future date. So, that, that is where I fear that it is going to be tied to our current funding for, for highway projects, for infrastructure projects, that we may not, if, if the climate action plan is put in place and we're not fulfilling all the obligations that we may or may not be able to, that it would negatively impact our, our funding that we currently get.
And I think that raises another question, because we've talked about the rural-urban breakdown and how the, the demographics in our county have changed. And that was an agenda topic at the last NOACCA meeting. And I think it showed 6% of the Medina, of the total urbanized population in NOACCA is located in Medina County. So, we are a smaller piece of the equation now, the funding equation for them. So, my concern is if these two, those two things kind of happen simultaneously, it will be hard for us to defend ourselves and say, you know, against changing the, the way funds are allocated on climate action plan front, because they might, it may be conveyed to us as it's a mechanism, a product of our shrinking urban demographics. And it, it might be a little bit of both, and we might get a double whammy that we don't even realize. So, because the, the, for me, as a new member of the board, the, the funding's philosophy and, and calculation methodology is very opaque. And I think that's by design. It's hard to say, these are the dollars that come back to Medina County and how they, how we get them, or the dollars that go in in the first place on behalf of Medina County, let alone finding what, what should come back.
That there is a grant opportunity that you're speaking of, but no details as to what's required, no details what the commitments need to be, kind of suspicious to me that, as you say, opaque, that's like, well, that would be the first thing I want to know. There are some grants you don't want, and, because it doesn't fit you. And as I understand it, it doesn't require a regional, a regional plan in as much as it does require a plan by a...
By the applicant.
By an applicant by jurisdiction.
Correct.
And that's fine. But one of the strategies that I then identified, and when we look at the, you know, what they released, and some of the people that have attended, that people have focused on specifically, as you point, we have a smaller urban size of the pot, is their belief is one of the strategies, strategies being land use changes and relocation. And the emphasis being is, what does that mean? It means that they're basically going to modify our land use regulations and literally develop, adopt policies that relocate people from areas of growth into areas that have not grown, or where they say population has been declining, i.e. Cuyahoga County. And the fear is they use this as justification for policies that will redirect when we start talking about people having the opportunity to buy and build in new, in communities, growing communities like Medina County, to adopt policies that are counter to our benefit and our history and our tradition. That is a great concern. Land use, when it comes to zoning, that's county and that's local. That's not regional. And there has always been a desire, since I have ever was on the board in the 90s, to stop urban sprawl and do what they can to keep Medina County and Geogah County and the outlying areas of Lorraine and a little bit of Lake from growing. That's always been, that was, what was the driving force of stopping a third lane widening? That was the impetus for stopping an interchange in Avon. That's the impetus behind no interchange in Monville. This is about, they don't want us to grow. They don't want us to, and they would rather drive the people, require the, prevent people from moving where they want to move and where they can afford to move. And I think that that's just antithetical to our principles. That's antithetical to our political culture. And it is one of the strategies they've identified, and we know from other climate plan, action plans in other parts of the country that have identified, like in California and elsewhere, that's exactly what they've done. And my fear is that they're going to use the money to try to do that and suppress really our ability to be able to, our communities to control the growth and have the land, kind of land use policies that they desire and that the people, people want, and the property owners deserve.
And, and I'll take that concern a step further, because you're talking about the threat of a regional government imposing those policies. I would argue it might be unpopular up here. I don't, I don't suspect that it is, but it may be, that those aren't even county-level decisions. Those are, we have township officials to make those decisions. And so, we're bypassing two levels of government to let the, so, and I think that's just, what you were saying was alluding to that, but, but we have two levels of government we're essentially bypassing if we defer to a regional government to, to make some of those plans for us.
Some counties have more influence over the land use policies locally. We, our, we have a planning commission that provides insight and provides guidance when it comes to subdivision regulations and so forth. So, there's, there's that interface, but you're right. It's largely the zoning authority is at the local in this county.
Because it...
But we also do infrastructure planning as well as the subdivisions. So, we, we do have an impact.
Yeah.
But you're right.
Yeah, and I'm not saying we shouldn't be part of those discussions. I'm just saying, but the decision-making happens...
At the lower.
At the truly local level.
Closest to the people.
Right. And that's as, as it should be.
And here, they want to take it at the highest level, largely driven by federal policy.
Yeah. And I think for the reasons you just stated, that's why it's important that we stay involved up there.
Yeah. I mean, to the extent we've got a seat at the table and a, and a proper voice.
Thank you, Andy.
Thank you. So, I'll continue to work on the letter. No, that's it.
Yes, thank you, Steve.
Enough trouble for one day.
Jeremy, did you have anything?
I did not.
Okay. Um, anybody else? Okay.
Oh, Andy.
Andy, oh, I, I thought you stepped down. I thought you were...
Well, you dismissed me and I...
I thought you were done.
I just wanted to bring you up to speed is that I did, I talked to Steve real briefly on the, Cleveland Metro Parks is starting on the Hinkley Lake project. And they're, they're, my understanding is they've worked on that plan for about nine years, and they failed to include Medina County in the planning portion of that. And there are significant regulations that, through the commissioners, our office helping for us and being stormwater management and the floodplain regulations. And we're trying to get a handle on, just seeing what the plan is, because there, there is floodplain up there, and that is something that is federal regulations that we have to comply with certain, do certain things if, if they're disturbing the, the floodplain. And it's, they have not been willing to send us a set of plans yet after repeated request. I've been told that, excuse me, that they may be raising the dam four foot, in the spillway four foot. Now, I, I do not, have not seen the plans, so my concern is that they may be raising the lake level, which would negatively impact our upstream road, being State Road and a bridge that we have there. So, I'm trying to work with them, but they have not been real forthcoming in giving us much information.
What, what legal authority we have to require them?
Well, that's what, that's what we're trying to understand is, my phone call, they said they're exempt from anything that we can enforce on them.
Even the impact on a county road and a county bridge?
I, but like I said, I haven't seen the plans, know whether there is an impact.
Okay.
So, I'm just trying to gather information, but just to keep you guys up to speed is that we're, we're just trying to work with them and trying to understand what the project really is, and if there is any impacts, or if we have any obligation or responsibility to look at the plan and review it, and whether there's any changes that need to be made.
Now, you had a conversation with them about a week ago, correct?
Yes.
And still nothing. Now...
I've had three conversations.
Okay. Now, Mike Lyons with the prosecutor's office is going to be contacting Rose Feeney.
Um, I, I told him I'd keep him abreast, that I'd give him about a week to get us a plan, and I've had a couple of follow-up phone calls, and the gentleman says, "Yeah, I guess I could do that." And I just haven't, you know, I would think it'd be easy enough to have him scanned just to send the email, but it hasn't happened.
I guess we'll have to have discussions offline as to what the next step could be to get their attention.
Yeah. And like I said, if, if they're exempt, that's fine. I, I hope they've done their due diligence in looking at the, you know, impacts if they are changing the lake level. But I don't know, because we haven't had a set of plans to look at.
I would think communicating that to you would be part of the due diligence.
Yeah. When I brought that up, they go, "Ah, yeah, maybe we should have done that."
Right. Whether or not they're exempt, just in good faith, sharing and saying, "Hey, this is the plan and we want to make you aware."
Correct. So, so we're patiently or impatiently waiting for that information. But Steve, I'll, I can't keep you in the loop of what's going on there, but it's just one of those that I'm not sure why it's taking the direction...
What's the big deal if it's not going to impact the county road?
Right. Yeah. That's all we're trying to figure out.
Okay.
All right. Just keep you in the loop.
Anything else, Andy?
No, I'm good.
Chris, did you have anything?
Not today.
Okay. So, I have two things that I'm working on, and I want you to, your permission for me to move forward on working on them. First of all, you know, the sheriff has had a need for quite some time for some training sort of facilities and rooms. So, he and I had toured a couple of training rooms at U of A, and moving forward, he is here today. I wanted to, are you okay with Chris, the sheriff, and I working on some sort of MOU to get him some training rooms and then bring it back to you for approval?
Absolutely. Sure. Yep.
Okay. Second, I did, was invited to the Fair Board. I did go meet with the Fair Board. And so, we had a good discussion, and I'd also like your permission for me to go out